The regular meeting of the Paramount City Council is called to order. We will have the Pledge of Allegiance led by Vice Mayor Diane Martinez, followed by the invocation from Pastor Ken Corver from Emmanuel Reformed Church. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So as I get ready to pray in just a moment, I'd just like to say, my on, can you hear me? Just like to say Paramount's been a miracle for about four decades, and I'm really grateful to the city staff for how you have functioned for decades and decades and decades in the council, for how you've allowed there to be a unity. Paramount's a miracle. It's been risen to such a high level by really a lot of what happens right here in this room. So just a great big thank you to you. I'm aware that in many parts of the world, the government level, how the government functions allows things to rise or allows things to drop down drastically, and I just want to say a great big thank you for what's happened to your staff and council. Let's pray together. Lord, we thank you for what's happened in Paramount for decades and decades. We thank you, Lord, for where we were and where we've come to. We thank you for a council and a staff that have helped unite school and church and government and business, and also the police and the fire and the civic groups. And so we thank you that this has become a model city, that people from Long Beach or Bellflower or Compton or Downey have turned and said, can we learn from this? Can we model this? So thank you for what you've done. We pray that you protect it. We pray that we would protect it. We pray this city would continue to rise and we would stand together. We would work together. We'd be united together. Would you protect us in this? And I thank you again for staff that's been amazing for years and years and years. We pray they would want to stay here by the way we conduct ourselves. We pray this in your name. Amen.
This time we have some presentations to make, and if my colleagues would join me So tonight, we're going to be making some special presentations related to the Paramount community with a special emphasis on volunteerism. And right off, we're waiting for some people to come from the CAFA report, so we're going to skip on to our Pitch In Paramount program. Pitch In Paramount is a volunteer cleanup program that started in 2010. Very similar to the former Looking Good program of the 1980s, Pitch In Paramount offers a chance for community volunteers to improve the properties of the residents in need and also spruce up larger public spaces in town. The Public Works Department provides the tools and the materials as well as basic instruction. Paramount's contracted trash hauler, Calmet Services, provides bins for the debris removal. With Mike McNamara of Emmanuel Reformed Church, please join us, and Pastor Brian Worth of Chapel of Change, and Pastor Larry Jamison of the Lifegate Church, please come forward, along with any members of the Paramount High School JROTC and their advisor Colonel Robert Our churches have been enormously helpful in getting volunteers to come out consistently over the last few years, and the JROTC members have also joined these outings with big numbers time and time again. Tonight, we're recognizing all of them for the great work they do for Paramount and for
Look this way, please. Perfect. Thank you.
I would just like to add on a personal note that I remember when the Paramount Cleanup Program, Paramount Looking Good first started, and I believe it was Emmanuel Reformed Church that stepped up and said that they would dedicate 100 volunteers every single weekend for a year, which was incredibly amazing. And it was also part of what we went in 1988 and put before the committee to recognize us for an All-American Cities Award. So the fact that it's now 2017 and the program hasn't got away, but instead volunteerism has increased, and now we have so many young people involved, is just truly a statement of how volunteerism is growing in Paramount and how we can count on our communities. So, thank you. Thank you very much. Every year, the city puts on a number of public events throughout the year, like summer concerts or holiday celebrations. These are designed to feature family fun and offer a chance for the Paramount community to come together. They also involve a lot of hard work. While they are technically productions of our Community Services and Recreation Department, staff from a variety of departments also play important roles. We also recently returned to using volunteers to help us with these events. When it comes to the Halloween Carnival, which draws thousands of residents every year, we get amazing help from volunteers. Tonight, we want to recognize them. Please welcome members of the Paramount High School Drama Club and their advisor Elizabeth Aldavy. The Cheer Club and their advisor Lourdes Aguayo. And again, the JROTC and Colonel Gill. The JROTC kids set up game booths and then helped operate them during the carnival. The drama and the cheer performed in the Halloween house, scaring people. I can personally attest to the fact that they did an amazing job, and I took the quick exit that they had set up for chickens. Cheer also worked at the carnival, handing out candy to children that went through the candy maids. The Halloween Carnival is always a big hit, and we appreciate the community spirit of these young residents of Paramount.
Perfect. Thank you.
Again, we are so fortunate to have such great youth in the city of Paramount, and I don't know if the person who was in the haunted house that was walking in the back bend in the striped pajamas that literally chased me out of the room is here. If you want to own up to that, it was you, huh? Whoa, girl. You've got some serious talent. For a number of years now, a larger group of residents, known informally as the pep moms, have been totally engaged in our community. If any of the pep moms are here tonight, could you come forward? The pep moms are based at the Learning Center at Spanney Park, where they take exercise classes and help with pep programs. They also are great volunteers at a variety of city activities and raise funds for pep scholarships at different events by selling tamales and drinks. They have formed a nonprofit group called Musa, Mujeres Unidos Serviantes Acta Bemito, or Women United Serving Actively. Maybe their biggest source of help to our community comes every December when they fill 25,000 bags with apples and candy canes for Santa Claus and his elves. We'd like to show you a short video of their teamwork.
Hey, Sede of Paramount, I am here with some of the volunteers that help with the Santa train. So what do you guys do?
Good morning. My name is Maria, and we're coming, a group of moms, we're coming to help to put the apples and candy canes in two bags. It's a big group of moms that will help all the city for all the kids.
Awesome. So besides being a pep mom, are there any other moms over here from any other organizations?
We have pet moms, star moms, so we are working on the schools to help the kids.
And then what do you guys do?
Actually, we're helping when the city needs and when the schools need. So we're doing, like today, we're doing these activities, helping with the bags. Sometimes we're helping on the Halloween. We are so happy to help. We're trying to be a very nice community in the city. It's good for us, and we're trying to do the best, too.
Oh, awesome. So thank you so much for coming out.
Thank you very much. Absolutely. Everybody.
These pep moms are so generous with their time and their dedication, and they're a shining example of the good people who live in the city of Paramount. Tonight, we want to say thank you very much for everything you do and for your dedication and your service to the city of Paramount.
Thank you.
Okay, our social media team has been out during the holiday season to record all of the activities that have taken place. To end tonight's presentation, we'll watch a few of their videos that appeared on Instagram and Facebook. But first, I want to thank everybody we recognize tonight. You all make Paramount a very good place, and we appreciate you all very much. Let's give one more great big round of applause to Paramount.
Madam Mayor and Council, if you all want to come back to the dais, we can watch the videos from here, and then we'll go into the other presentation that we have. As you're coming up, just some information on our social media before we roll the videos here. Our tree lighting on Facebook reached over 11,000 people, 318 likes. Instagram, we had 962 story views and 2,500 likes. The train reached 14,123 people and 286 likes. Instagram was 3,200 likes. The photos with Santa, that post reached 1,800 people with the 32 likes, and then on Instagram, 204 likes. And lastly, our breakfast with Santa post reached 3,800 on Facebook with 104 likes, and Instagram was 237 likes. So very active on the social media front we've been. So with that, I'll have Danny go and roll the video of the holiday event.
I don't know if some of you noticed that we had some really nice aerial shots there, and that's for a new drone that we all actually just purchased for the city to be able to photograph events like that. And just congratulations to the staff member Gio. You obviously did a great job of capturing the spirit of what we wanted to see. So next up, we're going to take item 16, which is the West Santa Ana Branch Light Rail Project Update Report, and we're going to move that up on the agenda. We have a lot of people here that are here for that item, and so we're going to go ahead and take item 16 at this time.
Yes, Madam Mayor and Council. Earlier this year, we presented to the city council an oral report on the proposed light rail train line that Metro wants to build through Paramount. We discussed with you the proposed locations where Metro wants to locate the Paramount Station. We also informed you about the outreach efforts that they have embarked upon. And as you saw outside, the council chambers representatives from Metro are here tonight and are hosting a mini open house in an effort, they say, to get the word out about their proposed project. So tonight, Kevin will update you on the status of where Metro tells us that they'd like to locate the Paramount Station, and Kevin will also pass along some details from Metro that we recently got about the proposed route this train will take once it's eventually built through Paramount. With that, I'll turn it over to Kevin.
Thank you, John. Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. This item is another update on the West Santa Ana Branch Transit Corridor or Light Rail Project. As you may recall, the last time I updated you on this project on August 8th, Metro's draft environmental impact report and station area planning work was just getting started. With this update, I'll go over some of the decisions that have been made thus far regarding the station location in Paramount, as well as how the rail alignment may impact the community. As a refresher, the West Santa Ana Branch Transit Corridor will run from Artesia to the south through Paramount and then north to Union Station in downtown Los Angeles. Also, you'll recall Metro has plans for two light rail stations in Paramount. One will be at the intersection of Paramount and Rosecrans Boulevard in the heart of the city, and the other at the 105 freeway at the city of South Gate border. The 105 freeway station will provide a connection to the existing Green Line that will eventually take passengers all the way to LAX. As I mentioned earlier, there are two major efforts currently underway, the preparation of the draft EIR and the station area planning work, which is led by Eco Rapid Transit. Drafting the EIR is an 18-month process for Metro that started earlier this year and will finish by late 2018. Once the draft EIR is completed, there will be another round of public hearings, and the public will be invited to provide comments. As part of the draft EIR, Metro has been working with city staff and the public to determine where to locate the proposed station at the Paramount and Rosecrans intersection. Such a station would be elevated above street level and will require space for a commuter parking lot. Originally, the station was planned for the southeast quadrant immediately north of Paramount Park, as shown on this slide in yellow. However, after taking input at a public meeting in Paramount where several residents were able to express their concerns, it was realized that a southeast station location would potentially impact several properties. As a result, after discussions between Metro and city staff, the proposed station location is recommended at the northwest quadrant of the intersection, as you can see in this slide. As you can see, the elevated rail station in yellow and adjacent and to the south, the station parking lot. While no homes are affected by this proposed station location, the potential relocation of two local businesses may be required, and that would be Stop Metals and GCR Tires and Service for the required parking lot facility. Obviously, trying to locate a brand-new light rail station in a built-out urban environment like Paramount isn't easy, and there will be impacts, and also there are pros and cons with any option. In the end, however, it appears that the northwest quadrant is the better and least impactful option for this station. As the rail alignment makes the almost 90-degree turn north from the Paramount and Rosecrans Station towards the 105 freeway, the light rail line will descend back down to street level and travel through a neighborhood directly abutting single-family and multifamily residences. At this time, Metro has not completely identified what the impacts will be to these homes in this area, but there will be some encroachment onto private properties likely requiring some right-of-way acquisition. Also, light rail service is anticipated to run through this neighborhood about every five minutes in each direction during peak commuter hours. And this is a closer view of the previous slide. As mentioned, right-of-way may be needed to be acquired from some of the properties in this neighborhood. This will obviously be a concern for area residents, and we will encourage Metro to keep this neighborhood informed of potential impacts and how Metro intends to mitigate those impacts. Property acquisitions will be defined in the draft EIR and may result in full or partial This graphic shows where the light rail will run at street level or at grade and where the rail will be elevated. To explain how to read this, in the top half of the graphic, looking left to right, it shows the rail line running north to south. In the circled area, you can see that the light rail starts at grade at the 105 freeway before beginning to elevate as it makes its approach to the Paramount-Rosecrans Station. In the bottom half, in the circled area, the rail line is shown elevated over Paramount Boulevard before dropping back down to grade before Downey Avenue as the rail travels east towards the city of Bellflower. So again, obviously, this new rail, this light rail project will bring dramatic changes to Paramount in terms of crossings at various street intersections, and particularly the visual changes at Paramount and Rosecrans with an elevated crossing over the intersection. And the existing freight line, however, will continue to run at grade. And as I mentioned in my previous updates to you, there's also a simultaneous effort to plan for new development around the Paramount and Rosecrans Station. Eco Rapid Transit has a consultant, Bruin Associates, that's working with cities to help determine the appropriate residential and commercial development around stations. This work is funded through Metro, and the public has been and will continue to be involved in the process. There has already been one public workshop held in Paramount, and we will continue to get word out about this project at various community events like summer concerts and at our farmer's market. For Paramount, the rail line and station could be a catalyst for transit-oriented development that not only supports rail commuters, but also the city's broader economic development goals for the future. As the station area planning in Paramount becomes more defined, we will come back to the city council for approval regarding changes to land use and zoning. So while the light rail will certainly cause impacts, there are economic development opportunities as a result. A master plan slash vision plan, which will have land use policy recommendations for housing and mixed-use developments, is also in the works. It's critical that the community stay involved in this process to ensure their voice is heard on future development in Paramount. And once the plan is drafted, Eco Rapid Transit will come before the city council in February or perhaps March of next year to make a presentation on its recommendations. From that point, the recommendations can be adopted into a specific plan or a long-range planning guideline for the station area. With that, again, the public is encouraged to stay informed on efforts regarding the station area planning. station area planning. A specific website has been created housing a lot of information on the stations in both Paramount and Southgate at www.paramountsouthgatewsab.com. Also, as I'm sure you've noticed, Metro staff is here with us tonight in the back of the room with display boards to help further inform the public regarding the project. So with that, I'll end my presentation and happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Thank you, Kevin. So, any further comments from the presenters in the back that they want to come up? Anything we should do at this time?
Any comments from Metro? Do I see them standing on the wall? Anything? Would you like to say anything?
Anything you want to share with us beyond?
Just thinking about the need for us to be here, and we'll be continuing our outreach effort for the during the process. We will probably be out here two more times during the meeting before we wrap up the draft environmental document, so we'll continue our outreach effort throughout the process, and love to hear your comments.
Thank you so much, and I did attend one of the meetings. It was very informative, and there's a lot of community input that needs to happen because there's a lot of unanswered questions. So we certainly appreciate all the community outreach that you can do so that when this project does progress, people, you know, don't feel that they have the chance to voice their opinion. So thank you very much for coming out. At this time, we're going to take a five-minute recess to allow anyone who would like to leave the chambers to be able to do so and collect any of the materials that they need. Thank you. (pause) (inaudible) 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 (pause)
Thank you, everyone. If I could get your attention, please. Thank you. We do have one more presentation. Our presenter had to come a very long way, and as you know, L.A. traffic is not easy. So we thank you for making the effort to get here. The City Council and our staff are always very conservative while managing the city's money and creating a fiscally responsible budget. Like every city in California, our Finance Department produces a comprehensive annual finance report. For more than thirty years, these reports have been recognized by the Government Finance Officers Association for their high-quality clarity and professionalism. This year, we have once again won that award. Our Finance Department is to be commended for their excellent work year after year. With us tonight from the Association is Canali Sokhazam? Am I close? And an audit partner in the accounting firm of Abernig, Trine, Day &amp; Company. Would you please come join us? I would also like to ask of any members of our Finance Department that are here tonight, if you could come up. Bye now.
The GFOA, the Government Finance Officer Association, established the CAFRA program to encourage full transparency and disclosure and to recognize governments that succeed in achieving that goal. Reports that are submitted for the CAFRA program are reviewed by selected members of the GFOA Association and also individuals that are involved in the GFOA Special Review Committee, which is comprised of individuals that possess expertise in the public sector financial reporting and includes financial statement preparers, auditors, and those who possess expertise in the financial arena. Cities that participate in the GFOA programs are required to submit their reports six months after the end of the fiscal year, and the GFOA's review process is typically four to six months after the report is received. This year, in addition to participating in the GFOA Award Program, the city also engaged us to perform procedures specific to the city's cash disbursements process and outgoing wire transfers. The results of those procedures resulted in no exceptions. Further, I'm happy to report that there are no difficulties or disagreements with management and staff during the course of the audit, and I would like to thank the city's staff for their cooperation during the audit process. Finally, I am pleased to present the City of Paramount the Certificate of Achievement and Excellence for Financial Reporting for the Fiscal Year 2016.
Yes, Madam Mayor, we do have several cards. The first one is from Ms. Linda Shabaro Martin, and she would like to address the Council on General Comments. Linda?
Uh, Mayor, Council, I'd just like to make a comment. Um, I'm not here to praise you on what a good job you're doing or if you're doing a bad job. I just want to ask you, the City Council and the Commissions, to do what is best for our community. It's time to let go of the small petty issues and focus our energy to make Paramount a good, solid, and safe community. I'm not saying we have to agree on everything. I'm just saying, let's agree to disagree, and in doing so, do it with respect. I came across this quote, I believe it was from Eleanor Roosevelt. She said, "Great minds discuss ideas. Average minds discuss events. Small minds discuss people." I would love to see Paramount be a community of great minds. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next one is from Ms. Roman Fujimaru, and she'd like to discuss general comments as well. Ms. Fujimaru?
Good evening, Councilmembers. Happy holidays to all. I just wanted to come out tonight and commend Councilmember Guillen as we closed 2017. The last nine months has been a groundbreaking year. Many local officials from surrounding cities, public officials, as well as heads of the AQMD, and multiple environmental groups have relied on Councilmember Guillen's insight to this environmental crisis affecting our city. Thank you for staring adversity in the face, holding your head high, and even though not always the popular thing to do, you continuously use your voice for the residents of Paramount who have been silenced for far too long. You are truly a breath of fresh air. At this time, not only for our city, but our nation needs strong, no-holds-barred women in public office representing their communities. I'm glad we have you right here in Paramount doing just that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Ms. Rebecca Guillen, speaking on behalf of Mr. Manuel Guillen.
Good evening, Council. This statement is from my father, Manuel Gillen, former council member, who asked me to present this following statement tonight. Council, I have worked with the majority of you for many years. Times have changed. It's time to pass the baton and allow the millennials in the city to step up and take us into the next decade. We have to trust that we have educated and trained the younger generation to serve us well. Their progressive ideas are worth paying attention to. As you know, my health prevents me from actively participating in the city's progression at the level that our youth have shown, and I suspect, whether you're willing to admit it or not, several of you are in the same mindset as I. It is clear that you have lost their confidence to serve in the manner that they expect. I urge you to assess your individual reasons as to why you would like to continue to sit up in those seats for an additional extended period of time, when we have completely capable, a completely capable generation of Paramount residents willing and able to commit to the next term, which begins in 2018. On a personal level, since I have time, I've spent thirty years in a corporate-level management. Part of our role is to groom the next level of leadership. So I ask you, Council, how have you contributed to the grooming of our next leaders for the city? Thank you.
Thank you. Next call? I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
Ms. Eleanor Mendoza?
My name is Eleanor Mendoza. I was born in Paramount, nineteen forty-four, in a little house on Adams Street. My dad went to Lincoln School. After I got older, I was altar chairman at Our Lady of the Rosary for thirteen years. I decorated church every year for thirteen years. The room mother, all the time my children were in school, I was a hot dog lady. I lived by Paramount Petroleum, by the nasty refinery, and I came to many City Council meetings regarding that refinery and was shunned. But I wrote a letter to David Horowitz. I don't know if you know who David Horowitz. He closed that refinery for two weeks, from the letter that I wrote him, all by myself. And after that, they, they had to do landscaping because of my letter and follow-through, but I, I, I had such a fight. I had people in your City Council, some that are still here, that would snub me. I would walk by and they'd just do this. So to see Lori being treated the way that she has been treated for fighting for clean air, I so commend her that she, she was a policewoman, that she stood up to protect and serve all her professional life, and that she's still doing that, and I just am here to thank her for fighting the fight that I started, that she has continued, and I so appreciate her for that. That's all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lori.
Next speaker is Ms. Samuel Dawson.
Thank you.
Good evening, Council. Let me just say on behalf of mayor of the residents how disappointed we are in the council members' vote to extend your term by one year and postponing our city election. Whether residents choose to reelect the current council or choose to elect new blood is not the issue. The issue is that you deny the residents this right to vote, who they want in office. Did you send any kind of survey to the residents to ask them if we wanted an election in November of 2018? A couple months ago, you voted to pass rules of decorum. You have these new rules, yet what we don't have is a plan to enforce them. We sat here last council meeting and listened to a resident call out Councilmember Gillen, disrespect her, and spew some nonsense about passing out poison apples. She obviously has a personal vendetta against Councilmember Gillen, and she continues to call her out personally at several meetings. Mayor Lemmons did reprimand her previously, but last meeting, she was allowed to continue with her disrespect with no enforcement of the rules of decorum. You should be aware, this person has personally threatened me on social media and slandered my family. So when the next time she or any other person stands up here and breaks the rules of decorum, perhaps they will be enforced. I hope the residents are seeing the disconnect here. Each meeting, I hear the same residents come up and announce the city is all rainbows and butterflies, yet these same handful of people are either commissioners or that are representing the long-term standing council members or employees of the metal companies. Have they been coached on what to say? I ask, because if so, they are in denial that Paramount is a textbook example of environmental injustices. Our city is great. That is why I choose to live here and fight these injustices, but contrary to what some may say, it's far from perfect. Do you think it's in the city's best interest to have the council members that have to recuse themselves when vote comes up with the metal companies because of their conflicts of interest? How is anything supposed to get passed? Well, they've learned that Paramount is a company town. The definition of a company town is a community that is dependent on one firm or industry for the most or necessary services or functions of town life. Is that what we want for our city, to be so dependent on the metal companies in town so they can continue to pollute our air and make millions of dollars at the expenses of our health? Haley from the Aaron Brockovich movie was also a company town. A few of the metal businesses continue to violate the orders of abatement. Do you really think they have our best interests in mind? Reps from the metal companies come to these city council meetings, writing down our names, addresses, and what we say to intimidate us. They throw money at the same council member campaigns and rent property from some of you council members and support your paycheck from the chamber. I do not have any personal vendetta with any of you. I am a product of parama Catholic schools where the nuns taught us to fight for the less fortunate and cannot stand up for themselves, even if it's not what is popular. So despite being threatened, slandered, intimidated, and criticized by a handful of your puppets, I am supporting what I believe is in the best interest of the future of our city. I give credit to Councilwoman Gillen, and she is not afraid to stand up for what is right. She is the true representative for our people. She has the integrity to stand against the council members who refuse to work with her and the big metal industries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. DeKay, you're up.
Good evening. Thank you for letting me come up here. Your microphone isn't working. I'll use my voice, which is better than your microphone. I have come here tonight to express my disappointment in the council's decision not to have elections in 2018, as was promised. After being in contact with the county and state agencies that regulate the elections and matters that concern the elections, I understand that the City of Paramount is not the only city that has extended their terms in office this way. By the way, look it up. I would like to thank Lori Gillen for her efforts to bring back fair and frequent elections to our city for a change, and I support her and others in our recall efforts against those council members who would take our voter rights away from the citizens of Paramount, of which I have been one for over fifty years. Lori, you are a breath of fresh air in a scale-old city council. Keep up the good work. Our neighborhoods need you. Thank you for being our voice on this council and listening to our concerns when no one else will. No one else on this corrupt city council will, despite the personal attacks to myself and yourself from Weber Metals. Thank you very much, Lori. You don't intimidate me. And I hope that you will stand, stand by us as we fight for our own air and personal safety.
Thank you. Is there another comment?
Yes, Mr. Jose DeLano.
Good evening to all of you residents. I'm so happy to see a lot of residents involved, and I'm so disappointed with the decision that you guys took on, on the last City Council meeting. You guys remind me Francisco Franco, nineteen thirty-nine to seventy-five in Spain, Pinochet in Chile, seventy-three, nineteen seventy-three to seven to nineteen ninety, Somosa, sixty-six, seventy-nine, Fernando Marcos, sixty-five, nineteen sixty-five to eighty-six, Fidel Castro, nineteen seventy-six, two thousand eight, Saddam Hussein, nineteen seventy-nine, two thousand three. They were dictators, and that's how you look like. But you just want to perpetrate in power for another two more years? This is totally unconstitutional. Until today, we have some dictators. You know, let's, let's mention Maduro in Venezuela, or the president of Honduras, they had an election like four weeks ago, and they still recounting the votes because he wants to perpetrate in power, like you guys do. Let me tell you one thing, they still dictators. They, they are the contemporaneous dictators, but at least they fake it to make. But you guys, what are you afraid?
Mr. DeLano, don't direct questions to us, and please keep your negative remarks, you know, as minimal as possible.
I don't know, I don't know why.
You can address an issue, but you shouldn't sit here and slander the council. You may address an issue.
Let, let us as a resident decide.
We appreciate your comments, and we do understand what you're asking for.
You are there to represent us.
Okay, we're not going to get out of line. I'm just telling you, just stick to the issue. I understand it's about a 2018 vote, okay? I do understand that. Continue, sir.
And also, I want to add something else. I like the idea with the metro, but I think the city, they need to work together with the, with the people who are doing the project. Because I was in one of the meetings, and there was a, a small group of people. We need to get our people involved. Why we don't use the robust system to invite them? It's like now, you know, I see a lot of people, a lot of residents here, which is good, you know, because we all need to come up together. We, we can't, you know, like, have, we cannot agree in everything, but at least we are coming together. Please, represent us. You were elected to represent us, not to restrict us like you guys did like about two months ago. No.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. DeLano.
That's what I'm asking.
Is there another speaker?
Yes, it's Mr. Alan Gomez.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Councilmembers. Good evening tonight. I sound like a broken record. You know, I've been up here for the fourth time today talking about SB four fifteen and SB five sixty-eight, which is to increase voter participation throughout the state of California, which is fine, but Governor Brown. Kind of saddened because, you know, the vote last month, on the twenty-first, was to vote option number two, to move the election, to move the election to March 2020. I was hoping for November 2018. The only reason why is it's for voter participation. It's not about me or anyone else. It's about voter participation. Option two, which was in the city's clerk and also was in the Paramount Journal, you know, was published this week, option number two states, the one you guys voted in, the council did, March third, 2020 election will yield a sixteen percent voter turnout. Moving the election to November 2018 will yield a forty-seven percent voter turnout. I mean, L.A. Times Press Telegram, they're loving this. ACLU, Maldiv, I mean, it's, it's black and white. I mean, I wish I could know what the reasonings were to move the election to 2020, because, I mean, Governor Brown signed this law to increase voter participation, and by moving the election to 2020, twenty-sixteen percent participation versus almost forty-seven percent. I mean, the residents want to vote. I mean, it, it's, it's, it's an issue of voters' rights. I mean, you guys can still change your vote, special session, call a special session, you know, reschedule the election to November 2018 and let the people vote. I mean, I voted for you guys. I mean, what, what is there to fear? I mean, if the people want to speak and come out, to me, there are a lot of issues going on in the city. To me, this is important to me. It's a voter rights issue. I went to USC, I studied this stuff, I mean, it's, I mean, I can tell you, I wrote term papers on it, and it, it just really bothers me that in our city where I grew, in our city where I grew up, it seems like voter suppression is alive and well. I mean, I, I don't know how else to put it. You guys are all good people, and I just try to reason, try to think of why did the council vote the way they did, and it seems like this was prepared by the city clerk. If I was up there, I would have gone with option number one. Wow, forty-six percent of my residents are going to come and vote versus sixteen percent. Why wouldn't I want to increase voter participation? I mean, the ACLU and Maldiv are picking up on this, and I, I, I don't know what to tell you. I mean, there is a recall offer in the city, and I'm proud to be behind it. I mean, you guys can contact me, call me anytime, we can discuss, but I urge you to call a special session and reconsider your vote. There's still time. The board of supervisors will not vote on it till the end of January. So I really urge you to reconsider your vote. If you see by the support we have here, I mean, this is moving forward. It's like a train, you can't stop it, and I wish we had his support. Thank you. Good evening.
Can I just ask where we're standing so that we can time this on the total thirty-minute thing?
Sure.
Do we have to move anybody to, because we're, we're going to be up to ten speakers, are we okay? Because some people I know didn't go with the full three minutes. Are we doing an overall thirty-minute clock?
Nine, ten, thirteen, I have thirteen, fourteen cards at three minutes. We're looking at probably another forty-five minutes.
Okay, so we can allow for two more speakers, and then we'll hold the rest until after the agenda?
Um, well, you could go up to the...
Do we have an overall thirty?
Yeah, thirteen minutes is what you still have.
Okay, there we go. Good, that's what I wanted. We have thirteen minutes. Go, sir. Thank you.
My name is Jesse Pereira. I'm a business owner, Army vet. My name is Jesse Pereira. I'm a business owner, Army vet, a home, I own a home in Paramount. I've lived here for twenty-two years, raised three kids. I'm really concerned about our future in Paramount. Councilwoman Gillen, she came out with the air quality stuff, and it's perfect. I mean, what she says is right on cue, but it seems like nobody else is listening. You know, you got people coming up, just saying all kinds of stuff, bored through.
Can we stop the whisper and give him our full attention, please? We don't want him to be rude, and we can't be rude either. And I'm chairing the meeting. If something's disruptive, I'll let them know, Councilmember Gillen. I'll let them know, Councilmember Gillen. Go ahead, sir.
Okay, now, what I want to say is that you got a lot of people coming up here and just saying derogatory things about a certain council member, but yet, when they say something about somebody else, it's quick to stop. You guys will stop, I mean, right away, which is unfair. Treat everybody right. Have respect for everybody.
Yes.
Sometimes it sounds like you got people coming up here that are being bought to say certain things. Be fair. We all want to live here. Like I said, I've raised three kids here. I got my grandchildren that come here. The air is bad. Do something about it. Don't say that these companies are all professional, because you got family members working there or own property. Be fair. That's all I got to say.
Thank you, Mr. Pereira. Anyone else?
Yes, Mr. Alex Yanis.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, Madam Mayor. I came up here for a little something different. I was on social media a couple years ago. I had an issue with the city. I, I didn't go about it right. I want to come up here and apologize. Mr. Moreno, Mr. Chun, and especially you, Mr. Johnson, I apologize for the way I behaved on social media. Some of the things I said, I was wrong. The way it goes about it is, there's a, there's a procedure that we have to follow here in the city, and it's coming up here discussing ethically, morally, approaching the council with respect, although we might not agree to share our, express our opinions in order to get a project done. The way, the way I went about it was wrong. Mr. and Ms. Lemmons, I appreciate you taking the time and showing me the proper way to approach council and approach people in general in order to get what you need done. I understand there's a lot of stuff that we disagree with, and a lot of stuff what Mr. Chun spoke out with, the city governance, that really stuck out with me. And we're not always going to agree on the same theme, but as the City Council, people that we vote in, we leave it up to you to guide our city forward. For twenty years, you've done an excellent job. You've moved our city forward. I remember when, reading an article, when the City Council had to work with the Paramount Unified School District in order to improve Paramount High School. Wow, it's a beautiful job. That, that took all of you working together. Nothing negative, all of you working together, and I admire that, because our school looks excellent, you know, and that, and it shows with our, our kids. They're gradually improving. I saw Mr. Hoffmeyer rooting on... I saw Mr. Hoffmeyer rooting on Paramount High School in CIF. I was like, wow, our council members are out here. I didn't see any new elected council, but I saw Mr. Hoffmeyer. I was like, wow, Mr. Hoffmeyer is still supporting our kids. And that's what it takes. It takes all of us, all of us residents to come out and support one another and not throw rocks at each other. And that's what, what my air was. I aired in my behavior and the way I conducted myself. So gentlemen, I apologize to you. I sincerely mean it, I was in the wrong. Thank you and have a Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Madam Mayor, just wanted to bring you up to speed on how many we, we do have left. We do have 12 speakers remaining. So if all, all 12 to three minutes, that would be 36 minutes. I just want to give you enough data on this.
Yeah, let's do the three, you know, I want...
Well, we, we can go up to the nine minutes, yes, the three.
Yeah, that's what I mean, that's three minutes for speaker and then we'll hold the rest like we're supposed to.
Mr. Gerald Serta is next.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Paramount has overcome many obstacles this year with many more to go to reach its potential. Last year's election brought change from newly elected candidate simply by informing the community of toxins emitted by companies who had been operating with many discrepancies. This year, Paramount has had about a dozen homicides. School district was obligated to conduct indoor testing for hexyl and chromium. Six, water testing was implemented at water level source. Flyers were, flyers were mailed under the assumption that school results were accurate. We did have numerous positive accomplishments. However, more could be done to improve the quality of life in Paramount. It is time for change of the guard, honor the 2018 elections. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Serta.
Madam Mayor, council members. I'm a 35-year resident here at Paramount and I came to tell you guys, you know, I listen to everybody, they have their opinion, they have their right. I think you guys are doing a good job. I am so proud of you guys. Actually, I was sitting with Public someplace and you spoke with me. Ms. Martinez, I saw you at the dance over there and you spoke with me. And Councilman Hoffman at the Paramount something we had recently. I just spoke to Mr. Mayor Lemmons the other day. In fact, you said to my daughter that I'm well informed. I've been coming to these meetings for two years now and I'm very, very pleased. Lori, of a skill in her heart, she's come to my church and I give her credit because we're down here Pastor Jones and, and we're a typical Baptist church and we're charismatic. And she sat next to me for two hours with our service, so I thank you for that. And I've met everybody except Mr. Hanson, I've never met you. So my name is Mr. Parks and nice to meet you.
Good to have you.
Okay, thank you. So anyway, I'm going to be, I'm sorry, I will be in the city. I have no intention of leaving the city. I don't want to sound morbid. The only time I will leave this city, when it's said and done, I go to my final resting place in heaven. I'm going to be in Paramount. I love this city, I'm not going anywhere. Want to share that with you. Again, you guys are doing a great job. When I talk to people, I talk up the city, I tell them things like our, our senior center we have here, the swap meet, the drive-in, Zamboni, the ice rink, Christmas programs, summer concerts, excuse me, court furniture, which is on the radio all the time advertising Paramount, Ralph's Warehouse, our downtown, our own bus line. I'm just very positive, I love this city. We have a wonderful sheriff department led by our lieutenant over here, the Parks and Recreation. You guys do an excellent job. I'm just a very, very happy person in the city. Excuse me, and I just wanted to say that I had a friend come from Corpus Christi, Texas. This lady spent time with me, we were in a band together. Had seen the guys for 40 years, we did the Facebook thing, he came, visited me. And he came, and he was so impressed with our city. And I, I just love this place. The last thing too also is, I'm an old-school DJ, I still DJ at different clubs and so forth. I play real records, I play vinyls. In fact, this weekend I'll be in Bixby Knows, if everyone comes to see me play. I play real records, old-school stuff. And speaking of records, I brought something quickly here. This is, most of you know this is a record, a vinyl record. The reason I brought this here, because this record was recorded in 1973 when I was 20-years-old at a recording company called Para West, right in the city of Paramount, Second Street. And I recorded this in Paramount when I was 20-years-old. Thank you. I am so proud to get a contact of the city. Whenever I go somewhere, I wear a particular t-shirt. If I go to Santa Monica, if I go to Texas, if I go to whatever. If I may just take this off and show it to you guys and I'll sit down.
We have time for...
Yes, we have time for two more, looks like, or maybe one more, Madam Mayor. Ms. Catalina Zamora.
Hi, this is my first time speaking, so I'm a little nervous. But I heard the ramblings about Ms. Gillen and I told my mom, mom? No, no, we're not tonight. It's important that we come and speak for the community because respectfully, for the first time that I feel, we feel more involved. And that's because her face is all over the place. She has an authentic understanding of our concerns. It's not about her talking as much as her listening. And respectfully, I know you guys are all probably doing a great job. But I don't see the, the impact. You know, you have the business owners and, you know, that rapport is important. But there's, what happens here, very important. But out there in the community, crucial, there's some of us that don't come to... My mom, since she's been here, we've been to several meetings. And this is like, wow, this is kind of exciting. We get to know now what's happening in the city. And that comes from her. She's a tremendously down-in-the-ditches type of person. She's just everywhere and... I'm hoping that things will change too because everybody has said the breath of fresh air. She is a breath of fresh air. Speaking of her face all over the place, the first time that I met her was in the first grade. Mind you, she's six or seven. There was this big bully girl that was traumatizing everyone. Lori, who was much smaller, went up to her, not fight, reasoned to her, you know? I remember them picking her up and cheering her up. Six-years-old, seven-years-old, she was doing that. This is, and it was about concern over somebody else. This is who she is. She's concerned about the community out there. And I love that. This is, but my city for 52-years and my mom too. And I love this city, I want my children to enjoy this.
30 seconds.
So, thank you very much for your time. Thank you.
We're going to do the rest because they won't have time for their full three minutes. So anybody who has a comment card turned in, that will be heard at the end of the agenda. So our next item up is the consent calendar. So with the consent calendar, motion by Hoffmeyer and seconded by Martinez. Is that right, Lynn?
Correct.
Okay. I need to remove items 305114 and 305145 from the register of demands. Those items are made payable to my employer. So we have a roll call vote on this? Councilmember Gillan? Councilmember Hanson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffmeyer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Martinez?
Yes.
Mayor Lemmons?
Yes.
Second.
Then moved by Hoffmeyer, seconded by Hanson, roll call please. Councilmember Gillan? The two items that were removed from the agenda, from the register of demands. Councilmember Hanson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffmeyer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Martinez?
Yes.
Okay, we're going to move to item 16. That's the one that we moved, 15, I'm sorry. Oh, business, the approving of the joint powers agreement for the Los Angeles County Choice Energy Authority.
Yes, Madam Mayor, Council. At the November 7th city council meeting, a representative from Los Angeles County gave the city council a very comprehensive presentation on a new energy purchasing program that cities are eligible to join. In addition to this presentation, I've included a lot of background information in some past Friday memos to you. This is an exciting opportunity that will give our residents and businesses this choice of where their power is generated from, either through Edison or this newly formed group of cities. This new source of purchasing power is expected to save our residents and businesses some money and also allow them to be a little bit more green, as much of this power is bought from renewable sources. So at the November meeting, the city council directed staff to proceed with joining this joint powers group. Chris Cash, our public works director, will review for us the details of the program. And before you tonight is the agreement that will allow Paramount to join this exciting program. So I'll turn it over to Chris. Chris?
Thank you, John, Madam Mayor, members of the council. As John mentioned, back at the November 7th meeting, the city council heard staff from the Los Angeles County CAO's office, who provided an overview of the Los Angeles Community Choice Aggregation Authority, or LACE, which is backed by the county. LACE is what is called a community choice aggregation program. And a CCA such as LACE typically will provide for lower electricity rates in most instances, as well as offer the opportunity to increase the amount of renewable energy used in a community. Based on the November presentation, the council unanimously directed staff to return with the requirements to join LACE by the end of the year. So just as a reminder, CCAs aggregate the buying power of communities to provide the energy commodity to its residents and businesses. CCAs will contract for energy, often at a discount, to the investor-owned utility, which in our case is Southern California Edison. CCAs can also emphasize the provision of renewable energy from renewable sources, again, at a discount to that which is provided by investor-owned utilities. As was discussed at the November presentation, CCAs work on the basis that the CCA secures power purchase agreements with power generators, generally at a lower cost than the investor-owned utility, with the potential for a higher degree of renewable energy. The CCA will set the rate and also provide customer programs. Beyond the provision of energy and rate setting, however, the provision of electricity continues to be exactly the same as it is currently. Edison will continue to maintain and provide all transmission and distribution lines. And Edison would also continue to provide meter reading and billing services as it currently provides. Again, the key here is that the CCA provides the energy commodity that will continue to be carried by Edison's lines, often at a discount, with the potential for a much higher level of renewable energy. The CCA has several key benefits and these include, the first and foremost is lower cost for residential and business customers. And this is because the CCA will enter into energy contracts that often have less overhead than the investor-owned utilities. They have, the CCAs also have the ability to increase the amount of renewable energy used, which given the number of state regulations that, that local governments will need to comply with in terms of offsetting greenhouse gas emission, participation in programs like this can help a long ways for meeting those goals. And finally, because the CCA sets the utility rates, there is an increased degree of local control for energy costs and greater public accountability in energy decisions. The potential for cost savings and the ability to increase the amount of renewable energy is used as a driver for CCA programs. Based on LACE's business plan, customers would save approximately 5.1% over Edison rates for their standard rate. The standard rate includes a mandated 28% renewable energy commitment. However, under programs such as LACE, there is the ability to use a higher degree of renewable energy. Using a 50% renewable energy component will continue to save customers approximately 4% over current Edison rates, which helps even more in reducing greenhouse gas emissions. And if there is a desire to switch to 100% renewable energy, while that cost will be about 6.2% more than current Edison rates, it is still less expensive than the cost that Edison could provide for this same type of service. Now, with any endeavor, there are some risks. And with the CCA, there are several inherent risks that should be considered. First, that the CCA will not be able to keep rates lower than Edison. Obviously, this is one of the primary benefits of the program. The CCA will endeavor to keep rates low through their use of an energy portfolio that is well-balanced with both short and long-term contracts, as well as the potential to invest in generation projects that result in competitive rates. Second, future regulatory actions could result in higher CCA rates. That being said, the California Public Utilities Commission, who has to approve CCAs, has made most of the decisions regarding this use, which lowers that possibility. There's also been some efforts by some of the investor-owned utilities such as Edison, PG&E, and others to try and recover costs from energy contracts that they procured for a customer base that has now shifted to CCAs. These efforts have been defeated and growing CCA membership will help to influence future efforts, but the risk is still there. Finally, there is always the potential that customers opt out at a too-high of rate to remain viable. However, lower rates should prevent this and prior experience in other CCAs, particularly in the Bay Area where they have existed for many years, has indicated that this is unlikely. For cities that joined LACE before the end of 2017, there is no cost to join. The County of Los Angeles provided a $10-million startup loan to help get LACE off the ground. Cities that join after 2017 may be assessed the cost to join, which is why we are recommending to join at this time. And just as a note, since we are talking about how to join and the cost, cities that join LACE can leave per the Jane Powers Agreement with 180 days' notice. However, at some point in the future, depending on the power purchase agreements, there may be a cost to leave and this would be the liability for the proportion of, portion of power purchase agreements executed on behalf of the city's customer base. This would likely be negotiated if it were to happen and would also be based on the idea that there is not another customer who could use the city's power allocation. As to LACE's governments, governance, LACE is a joint powers authority, much in the same vein as SEACA or the Joint Powers Insurance Authority, which we are familiar with. Every member government gets an equal seat on the board and most votes are by a majority of members present. As was discussed at the November meeting, there are some special items, mostly financial, that require two-thirds of the members present in order to pass. There is also an option to call for a weighted vote based on load share, and that's electric load share, with the following restrictions. In order for this to occur, three members must agree to have a weighted vote and weighted votes can only follow an affirmative vote of the board. Since our last meeting, there have been a number of cities that have joined LACE. And before you are the latest members. In fact, tonight, I know that county staff is running around trying to get to five different council meetings throughout the county who are also in the process of joining. And so unfortunately, I don't think they were able to make it to our meeting as a result of that. But the number of cities has, has been growing steadily as, as the months have been going by. Now, if the city joins LACE, all residential and business customers will be opted into the LACE program by default. Customers will receive two notices of the implementation of the program prior, prior to switch over to allow for opting out of the program. Customers will also receive a notice after switch over and can opt out at any time. The city would also provide information on this program through its customary sources such as our website, city publications, social media, as a further means of providing information about this program before it is implemented. As the county laid out at last month's meeting, they do have a schedule for implementation, starting with January of next year in which the county's accounts would be switched over. And then followed by county and city commercial accounts. And then towards the end of 2018, all county and city residents would be finally switched over. This is, this is a means of trying to work out any kinks with a lower number of accounts being switched over and trying to work over any issues that might occur in terms of particularly setting up the, the switch over and billing with Edison for, for those cities that are part of the LACE program. the LACE program. It was also asked at the November meeting if staff could talk to another city to find out their experience, and as requested, we did. As I mentioned, CCAs have existed in Northern California now for probably the last decade. We reached out to the city of Redwood City in the Bay Area, which is a member of a CCA called Peninsula Clean Energy, which they've been a member of for the last five years. For some of you who have been with the city for a little bit, you may remember Alex Kajikian, who used to be a management analyst with them, us. He's now a deputy city manager with Redwood City, and we actually called Alex up to find out about what their experience was, and he said that they actually were very satisfied with the performance of the program, that the program has lowered energy costs, just as was advertised, and also they were able to increase the amount of renewable energy used, which again helps with reducing greenhouse gas reduction for the region. Should the council decide to join LACE, there are a number of steps that must be taken. First, the council must approve execution of the JPA agreement and read by title only, waive further reading, and introduce ordinance number 1093, and place it on the next regular agenda for adoption. Second, we would ask the mayor to appoint a member of the city council to be the city's primary representative to the LACE Board of Directors. And finally, we would ask that the mayor appoint an alternate representative to the Board of Directors. The JPA agreement allows for appointment of a staff member as the alternate board member, and as such, staff is recommending to the mayor that the director of Public Works be appointed as the alternate member due to the potentially technical nature of this endeavor at times, as well as the current scheduled board meeting time, which is on the first Thursday of the month at either 1:00 or 2:00 in the afternoon. So with that, that concludes my presentation. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Chris. Are there questions?
Yes, no, I do have a question. Chris, if somebody wants to opt out of this, there's a time period involved in that?
They actually can opt out at any time. There are going to be a number of overt gestures before the LACE program is actually implemented to get those customers notice of it and to allow them the opportunity to opt out before they're even opted in.
I understand that.
Afterwards, they can opt out at any point.
And is there a waiting period involved? That's what I'm getting at.
No, there isn't. They can opt out at...
And they'd be out within a month?
Yes.
Okay.
So if they don't opt out, they're automatically in? And let's just say, I noticed on one of your bullet points, it said something, it could possibly lose money. I'm just a little concerned, would they give the community notice so that they could at that point opt out? I don't want to see anybody get stuck with like any type of a low payment or big bill because something happened with the market or the initiative, and then all of a sudden it's upside down?
Are you assuming that the rates would increase?
Like...
And that somebody would be stuck with a really large bill?
Right.
Again, they can opt out at any time, so you're billed monthly, and the rates would probably be set more on an annual basis.
Okay.
So you would have the opportunity, say your rates were to be adjusted upwards, and you looked at it and you felt that your rate was now higher than what Edison was, you could then immediately opt out.
So not past one billing cycle?
Right. It should happen within, my understanding is it should happen within, by the next billing cycle.
I'm just concerned for like senior citizens who don't read everything, look at everything, and then all of a sudden their bills are higher than what Edison would be. That opting out is just kind of worries me a little bit.
First, the average person in the House vote, what vote either say use that 5%, but on it, over the year, you use annual bill, right? So you started off with an annual.
Well, your rate, your commodity rate?
Right.
Is about 5% lower per month. So, and then you're billed monthly. So whatever your current average Edison cost is, you can count, you can figure that it's about 5% less with the LACE program.
Any other questions?
Make a motion to approve.
Diane, one quick moment, please, I just have a quick question regarding the opting out on the bills. Do you know if at this time Edison has any plans to put regular statements, maybe for the first few months, in the bills for disseminating that information?
My understanding is actually the way it works is the LACE organization itself, working with its member agencies, sends out a separate notice that is independent of the Edison bill.
But they're going to get two different bills?
No. You'll get, when the LACE program is implemented, you will continue to get the same bill from Edison as you do currently. The only difference will be is that within your Edison bill, there will be a page for the LACE program?
Right.
That represents the cost for the electricity commodity, as opposed to currently, there's a page in there that's from Edison for the electricity.
Right.
But it will look the same and be, and will be billed from Edison and paid to Edison.
Okay, so we don't know at this point in time if on that separate page that has their information, will that be separate contact information from Edison?
There will be, although some, I think Edison still continues to do the customer service for the program. There may be some specific issues that Edison then refers to LACE to answer, but for the most part, all of the same customer service you would have now would continue to be handled by Edison.
Okay, so now let's go back to the question about, do we know if they intend to do any kind of public marketing effort within the bills to inform the residents of the change and contact information?
I have not heard that they're going to do it within the bill. However, if we join and we have a seat on the Board of Directors, that is certainly something that potentially could be asked as well.
Yeah, I think we should work towards that requirement, and maybe at least hold it in place for like a year until people understand the difference in what's going to be happening with that bill.
Diane, I'll entertain your motion.
Make a motion to approve.
Okay. A move by Martinez, seconded by Hoffmeyer. Can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Giann?
I'm staying right now.
Councilmember Hanson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffmeyer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Martinez?
Yes.
Mayor Lemmons?
Yes. And would this be the appropriate for the appointments?
Yes, for the appointment, yes.
Okay, so I'm going to be appointing Councilmember Hanson to this board and our director of Public Works for Casual Services.
Okay, so we're going to move now to item seventeen. We're already taking care of sixteen.
Yes, Madam Mayor, we have two neighborhoods in town that are requesting resident permit parking, and Adriana Lopez, our Public Safety Director, is here to tell us about them. Adriana?
Thank you, John. Good evening, Madam Mayor and councilmembers. Like John mentioned, in recent months, the Public Safety Department has received two requests for resident permit parking in two separate neighborhoods. One of the requests is for the neighborhood that includes the 8100 block of Century, Rancho Arroyo Street, Rancho Ponderosa Road, Rancho Del Oro Street, and Rancho Valero Road. The second request is for the 3900 block of Orizaba. We will first review the request for the neighborhood, which includes the 8100 block of Century Boulevard. On July 13, 2017, a homeowner living in the neighborhood requested resident permit parking. Per the homeowner, an increase in vehicles being parked on the street has been noticed, which he believes is related to three nearby apartment buildings located in the city of Southgate. In addition, these vehicles are being parked for an extended period of time. Here's the map of the neighborhood that we're discussing. It's located on the northwestern eastern portion of the city between Paramount Boulevard and Downey Avenue, with Rosebel Elementary School to the east. The neighborhood consists of 35 single-family residents, and the three apartment complexes, which are located in the city of Southgate, have been highlighted for your reference. These are pictures that were taken of the neighborhood. In order to determine the sentiment of the residents in the neighborhood in regards to parking, a door-to-door survey was conducted by public safety personnel on September 20, 2017. Surveys were collected from 28 of the 35 residents for a response rate of 80%. In the survey, residents were asked two questions. How do you describe parking availability in your neighborhood, and how do you feel about restricting parking via resident permits? With the majority of the people supporting resident permit parking. The Public Safety Commission reviewed the request at its October 24, 2017 meeting, and after hearing public comments, the commission made a motion to recommend that the city council approve the resident permit parking for the neighborhood. As mentioned, we also have a second request, and the request for this is related to the 3900 block of Orizaba Avenue. And on September 6, 2017, a separate request was submitted to the Public Safety Department by a homeowner who also wanted to implement this restriction in his neighborhood. The resident had expressed parking concern at a previous Paramount City Council meeting, where resident permit parking had been for Anderson Place, which is located southeast of this neighborhood. The resident was asked to submit a written request, which he did. The 3900 block of Orizaba Avenue is also located on the northeastern portion of the city between Paramount Boulevard and Downey Avenue. This block consists of seven single-family residences. Per the request, an increase in vehicles not belonging to the residents living on this block has been noticed. In addition, the vehicles are being parked for an extended period of time. Once again, a survey was collected from seven out of seven homes on the street for a response rate of 100%. In the survey, residents were asked the same questions, and once again, the majority supported resident permit parking. The commission, Public Safety Commission, also reviewed this request at its October 24 meeting and made a motion to recommend that the city council approve the request for resident permit parking for this neighborhood as well. There are some pictures of the neighborhood. If the city council approves the proposed parking restriction via ordinance tonight, the item will be scheduled for adoption at the January 9, 2018 city council meeting, and the parking restriction would go into effect 30 days after the adoption date. Chapter 29-6.4 of the Paramount Municipal Code would need to be amended to include these two neighborhoods. It is recommended that the city council conduct a public hearing and read by title only, waive further reading, introduce ordinance number 1094, and place it on the next regular agenda for adoption. This concludes my presentation. May I answer any questions?
Thank you, Adriana. Are there, let's go into the public hearing. Anyone who is in the audience who wishes to testify in favor of these items?
Actually, Madam Mayor, I do have a speaker's card for Mr. Luis Vasquez.
Come up, sir.
Who would like to speak in favor.
Councilmembers, I was the initial resident that actually brought this to the council meeting. I hope we get in favor of making this, the 13900 block of Orizaba Avenue, a permit-only Not only is the extended amount of time that individuals park there that don't live around there an issue, but also the amount of trash that they throw. Just the last month, I've had to clean up after glass outside of my driveway. One of my neighbors in the front, constantly bags of, bags of fast food, McDonald's, things like that. It's just a nuisance, and I think that permit parking would resolve that issue in our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there another speaker's card in the side? Okay, anyone else wishing to speak in favor of this item? Please come up, sir.
Steve Gomez, I reside at 8125 Rancho Arroyo Street. I'm having the same issue as him, too. We've had people park in front of our house, roll up drugs, smoke in front of our kids who can see out the window. We've picked up trash with the used tampons. We've had people leave their cars there for three, four, or five days at a time, people who do live on the Southgate Park. Even if you go right now at our street, you can see it, there's cars that are parked there six days a week. They move there for street sweeping. We get people that park over an extended period of time over the weekend. So it makes it hard for any of us to park there if we have any kind of family come over, want to mow the lawn, do anything like that. So it's been a nuisance since I've been there for the last two and a half years, and we've talked about it with our neighbors. We've had cars towed because they park in front of our driveway. They park in the red. I mean, it's a nuisance every day. So like I said, our kids have noticed that stuff. I've gone out, I've spoken to people who park in front of our house who are doing that kind of stuff. It just happened a couple nights ago, too, and I went outside and they moved. So, and then we just installed a ring doorbell, so we have video evidence if ever you guys do need something like that. So like I said, it's a constant thing at our street, so.
Thank you. Anyone else wanting to speak in favor of this item? Is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition?
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Thank you.
Move by Martinez, seconded by Hanson, that we close the public hearing. Can I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Giann?
Yes.
Councilmember Hanson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffmeyer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Martinez?
Yes.
Mayor Lemmons?
Yes. Have a motion on the item?
Motion to approve.
Move by Martinez, seconded by Hoffmeyer. Can I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Giann?
Yes.
Councilmember Hanson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffmeyer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Martinez?
Yes.
Mayor Lemmons?
Yes. We're going to move to item 18, construction of a traffic signal.
Yes, Madam Mayor, Council. At a mobile city council meeting last year, the council heard from residents who were asking the city to help make safer the intersection of Orange and Somerset. So here's Chris Cash to tell us what can be done. Chris?
Thank you, John. Madam Mayor, members of the council. As some of you may recall, last year, as part of the Mobile City Council tours, a resident had brought up some concerns with the traffic signal at the intersection of Orange Avenue and Somerset Boulevard. After that meeting, staff looked into the issue, and as a result, we decided to perform a traffic warrant analysis to determine whether there needed to be modifications to the signal to include a protected left-turn lane, which in more simple terms is the addition of a green arrow to control left-turn movements at the intersection. The warrant analysis did determine that a left-turn arrow was needed, and as a result, the council allocated funding to make those modifications to the intersection signal as part of this year's budget. In order first to add the left-turn arrow, the signal mast arms will need to be replaced with longer mast arms, and also there will need to be upgrades made to the signal's control system. Bids were open for this project on November 21, and four bids were received, and the apparent low bid was in the amount of $178,978 from P T M General Engineering Services, which is $28,978 above the budget amount of $150,000. The high bid was in the amount of $219,838. The additional budget needed for this project can't be funded with proxy funds. That concludes my presentation, and we are recommending a ward, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Chris. Other questions? Do we have a motion?
Yes.
Move by Hoffmeyer, seconded by Hanson, and we have a roll call?
Councilmember Giann?
Yes.
Councilmember Hanson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffmeyer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Martinez?
Yes.
Yes. Next item is the authorization for the landscaping services with Bright View.
Yes, Madam Mayor, councils. A few years ago, you may recall, the governor signed into law an order that prohibits cities from using drinking water to irrigate lawn and street medians. This was done in response to the drought that the state was going through, and even though the drought is over, that order still stands, it remains permanent. So just as a note, some of our street medians, when they were built years ago, are there watered with recycled water. So the order allows us to keep using recycled water for this purpose. So as you're driving through town, you may see some medians that are green and others that are brown. So those that are green obviously are being irrigated with recycled water. So we've been phasing in the replacement of our street medians to replace the dead lawn with drought-tolerant plants, and so here's Chris Cash to tell you which boulevard is next and how we plan to tackle this latest project. Chris?
Thanks, John. Madam Mayor, members of the council. This year's budget allocated funds were the renovations of medians along Paramount Boulevard, starting at Madison and continuing to the South City's North City limit. Improvements to the medians will be similar to the drought-tolerant landscaping that was installed on Downey Avenue last year. The drought-tolerant landscape replaces the median turf that died as a result of the governor's order to ban the irrigation of turf on street medians unless it is done with reclaimed water. This upgrade on the medians will coincide with the arterial resurfacing work on a portion of Paramount Boulevard and will complement the recent downtown Paramount Boulevard renovation project that was completed in fiscal year 17. This, as John mentioned, is one of the sections of medians that was irrigated with drinking water, and as a result, the turf has long since died off. water, and as a result, the turf has long since died off. Originally, we had intended to do the landscaping as part of the street project. However, as part of the design process, we conduct what are called engineer estimates, and during that process, the engineer estimate that was developed for the renovation of the median valued the landscape work at approximately three-hundred-and-nine thousand dollars. Our budget had only anticipated that that work would cost one-hundred-and-fifty thousand. So, as we often do during the design process, we look for other avenues to either make things work, or we tweak the design itself to try and make it fit within the project. So in this case, we turned to our landscape maintenance contractor, Brightview, who has built projects for us previously, to get a quote for the same scope of work. Under our contract with Brightview, we have the provision to allow them to build new or renovated existing landscape sites. Brightview had actually done the work for us on Downey Avenue, and they came back to us with a cost of one-hundred-and-eight thousand, two-hundred-and-twenty-six dollars. This is a significant savings over the engineer's estimate and is well below our budgeted amount of one-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars for this work. Brightview's existing labor pool within the city and the ability to spread their overhead over the entirety of our contract helps to lower that cost. According to the city's purchasing policy, purchases of equipment or services in excess of twenty-five thousand dollars does need to be approved by the city council. The installation of new landscaping is provided in our existing contract with Brightview and therefore does not require competitive bidding, however, it would be an additional service, which is why we are seeking the council's approval. And as John mentioned, we do have several segments of our median system that are irrigated with reclaimed water, and they continue to look as they did before the drought. However, we do have section portions of Alondra, Somerset, and Rosecrans that will still need to be renovated, and that is something that we will continue to look at as part of this next year's budget and see what we can do to move that along a little quicker. We do, though, currently have Downey done, and with this work, we would then have Paramount done in terms of converting it to a drought-tolerant scheme. So with that, that concludes my presentation, and be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Chris. Questions?
Motion to approve?
Move by Martinez, seconded by Hoffmeyer. Can I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Ginn?
Yes.
Councilmember Hanson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffmeyer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Martinez?
Yes.
Mayor Lemmons?
Yes.
Okay, we're going to move to the CAFR report.
Yes, Madam Mayor, council, it's that time of year again where we give you our year-end report on the fiscal year that just ended, June thirtieth of two thousand seventeen. Just as a recap of the whole process, when the council adopts a budget in July, we present you with predictions that are as accurate as possible as we can get to when it comes to our revenues and expenditures. We then make a more accurate prediction with those numbers at mid-year, at mid-year budget time, when we have actual numbers to go with. Then, when we're closing the books, as we're doing now, we have extremely accurate numbers of how we ended the year, and we get audited and produce this report. So this is called, once again, the CAFR, the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. Before Karina goes into the report, though, I do want to point out, as you heard earlier, that we did something a little different this year. When our auditors came out for their usual audit, we asked them for an additional audit of some of our procedures, not because we think there are problems with our procedures, but because we want to be proactive and prevent anything from occurring that is anything that we've heard other cities having to grapple with. As stewards of the public's money, it is our responsibility to make sure that the public's money is safe and that we continue to maintain the public's trust, so that's truly important. So here's Karina to give you the report and tell you about the additional audit and how it went.
Thank you, John. Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the council. I am very pleased to present to you the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report for fiscal year two thousand seventeen. As you know, other than the budgets, the year-end report is one of the major duties that the Finance Department handles every year. This report captures the finances for the entire city, including the general fund, other grants, water funds, successor agencies, and also components units such as the Housing Authority. As John mentioned in his introduction, the CAFR is a great tool to compare actual data with budget estimates, which our auditors look at it very closely during the audit to ensure that the E N numbers, they are matching with the council's, what you guys have intended at budget time. And leading up to the completion of the CAFR, there are a number of tasks that we do, including implementation of new accounting standards. For example, in fiscal year seventeen, we implemented G S V seventy-four. This is a standard requires to report all post-employment benefit plans other than pension. This new G S V seventy-four, along with G S V seventy-three, which was implemented last year, provides us a better overview for all post-employment benefits, pension, and retirees' health benefits combined. Later in the presentation, I'll go through the long-term outstanding liabilities related to that. In addition to the numbers, our independent auditors, Reverend Nick Tryon Day, on an annual basis examine our internal controls and also make sure that our financial is presented fairly in all material matters. As we have in the past, we are very happy to report that we have received a clean opinion from our audit firm, once again, for fiscal year seventeen. As part of our day-to-day operation, we always follow the industry best practices. We have guidelines in place in areas such as separation of duties, approval authority, review and approval process, and documentations. We also do self-evaluation in an effort to continue strengthening our internal controls in response to changes such as in environment, technology, or regulation. As you know, having a sound internal control is critical in any operation. It is a great tool to prevent or to maintain effective fraud, to prevent for effective fraud prevention, excuse me. Given what we have hearing from the news related to the scandals from other government agencies, as our audit partner mentioned, John also mentioned, we were being proactive, and we initiated a separate audit procedure called Agree Upon Procedures this year with our independent auditors. We look for our auditors to give a guidance and independent and objective detail review on certain areas of our operations, and they selected cash disbursements and wire transactions as part of this engagement. Once again, this agree upon procedures is totally optional. We initiated this to make sure that if there's any area that we can improve on, we want to be proactive. And it took a lot more time for us to prepare for this audit, and we had to finalize some of our procedures and policies. And at the end, I'm very happy to report that we're in great shape in those areas. No exceptions have been found by our auditors and no changes needed to be implemented at this time. With a small staff that we have, and we really try our best to have a great internal controls, and, you know, our efforts really have been paid off. To give you a couple examples, in the case of the city of Pasadena, where an employee initiated an approving invoice, and in the case of city of Placencia, where an employee initiated a wire and also approved the same transaction, this would never happen in the city of Paramount. We have dual control in every step of our operations. A person who initiates a payment request will never be the one who approve it. Regarding wires, a person who initiates a wire does not even have the capability to approve it, our bank would not allow it. Once again, it's great news that we're in great shape. We are by no means being perfect, but I can assure you that we will continue to look for ways to improve and maintain the integrity of our finances. And next, I want to talk about our financial data. And we'll first look at our revenues. Our city revenues are in three major fund categories. The biggest revenue source is our general fund, about twenty-five million dollars total. This is a fund where the council has the most discretion in spending, and it comprises of various sources. Consistently, the most significant source of income is sales tax, followed by motor vehicle license fees, utility users' tax, franchise fees, and property tax. In a restricted funds category, as its name stated, this can only be used for specific purposes. Some of our major restricted funds are city between home funds, transportation funds, and star after-school grants. The amount we receive change from year to year. Overall, in fiscal year seventeen, we receive about eight-point-seven million dollars. Lastly, our water fund, the total revenue for the year was seven-point-nine million dollars. If you recall, in previous years, revenue reduced significantly as a result of water conservation. Since water conservation restriction has been lifted, we see water consumption slowly getting back up, and water fund is no longer in deficit this year. This is great news as we are now in better position to apply for funding for the construction of a new well. Here is our revenue trend for the past ten years. The light blue bar represents the general fund, and the darker blue represents the restricted funds. In fiscal year two thousand seventeen, we had about thirty-four million dollars total in general fund and restricted funds combined. The general fund has a slight decrease when compared to the previous years, which reflect the decrease in sales tax and utility users' tax. Sales tax will be discussed in the following slide. And for utility users' tax, it has reduced about twelve percent in fiscal year seventeen. In terms of dollars, it's about four-hundred-and-fifty-three thousand dollars just in one year. The decrease is related to lower-than-expected receipts in different areas, also refunds and exemptions are issued. The good news is that the decrease is offset by increase in other areas such as property tax and motor vehicle license fees. On the restricted funds category, we receive about eight-point-seven million dollars in a year, which is consistent to the previous year. As I said earlier, the biggest revenue source for the general fund is sales tax, and we receive about seven-point-three million dollars in a year. This represents a slight reduction when compared to previous year. As you know, our sales tax rely on a few categories, particularly on fuels. As fuel prices continue to stay at all-time low and consumption also remain very low as well, it really impacted our total sales tax receipts. All in all, while seven-point-three million dollars is at a good level, when we look at the ten-year trend, however, it is lower than what we had in two thousand and eight, pre-recession level. So we'd like to see it improve soon in the near future, and therefore, we're working hard to promote the shop, local, and spanning Paramount campaign. This ten-year expenditure trend reflects the normal operating expenses as well as the use of funds from previous year open-time use. In fiscal year seventeen, we expanded approximately thirty-five million dollars when all funds combined. The higher expenditures in fiscal year sixteen represent some capital improvement projects, also a land development for the restaurant site. Also wanted to point out the high spike in fiscal year thirteen, it was related to projects funded by grants, including Salute Park and a senior housing project. In the amount of operating departments, we expanded about thirty million dollars in a year, and we consistently spend the most resources in public safety. Thirty-six percent here reflects a three-point-seven percent increase in our sheriff's contract. This is the product for fiscal improvements of capital improvement projects. If you recall, our former redevelopment agency funded significant projects in the past, and a five-million-dollar annual funding has vanished since the dissolution of the agency. Overall, in fiscal year seventeen, we're still able to spend approximately four-point-seven million dollars on capital improvement projects. We continue our maintenance and operations and improvements at city parks and facilities. We also completed the last phase of the transformation of Paramount Boulevard, and as we do every year, we continue improving our streets and sidewalks. As far as water improvements, after the drilling of a new well in fiscal year fifteen, we're hoping we can complete the well construction in coming year. If you recall, the drilling was funded by a former redevelopment agency's bond proceeds, and as I mentioned earlier, the water fund has been in deficit, and we were not in a position to obtain a loan. We are now planning to apply for funding in the current year. Having one more well will help us come closer to being self-sufficient and not relying on imported water. After we review our current year's expenditures, I'd like to discuss some long-term expenditures in our books. This table includes long-term liabilities such as capital leases, employee leave, O P A P, which is other post-employment benefits related to retirees' health benefits, pensions, and other notes payable. All these liabilities are required by accounting standards to be included in our financial statements. You can look at this liability as your mortgage. There is no immediate demand for paying this off right away. You would make payment every month, and eventually, the mortgage would be paid off. This would be the case for these liabilities. I can tell you, we're diligent in making the required payment obligations, and as you know, pension and O P A P is a hot subject these days among government agencies, and we're certainly not immune from it. The outstanding balances for pension and O P A P are updated based on the annual valuation performed by professional actuary every year. The reason for the annual update is because assumptions change constantly, such as number of retirees, age, investment earnings, mortality rates, et cetera, and therefore, valuation is needed on a regular basis. In fiscal year seventeen, there is a significant increase in pension liabilities. It was about four-million-dollar increase in just pension, and that's because CalPERS posted a very low earning investment for investments. It was posted point-six percent versus their prediction was seven percent. Also, CalPERS has since positioned themselves to be more conservative in their assumptions, and therefore, this further impacted the actuary valuation of the outstanding liabilities. The good news is, we are small, we're fewer than a hundred employees, and we contract our police services, therefore, we're in a risk pool, which keeps our rates at a relatively low range when compared to other larger agencies. Another good news is that fortunately, financially, we were able to put aside some monies to pay down the liabilities for pension, similar to the way we started pre-funding O P A P in fiscal year two thousand nine. We are now turning to the liability for pension, and which will better position ourselves financially. Just like paying more principal amounts for your mortgage, ultimately, the mortgage will be paid off sooner, and this is our goal, to pay down the pension liability sooner as well. For the general fund, back in July, when we adopted a budget, we anticipated the year would be just break even. We now have closed our book, and we are very pleased to report we're able to end the year in a much more favorable position. The reason is revenue came a little higher, and our expenditures came in lower, which contributed to this surplus. The service now allows us to allocate six-hundred-thousand dollars to the purse reserve and help pay down the pension liability. We plan to make some adjustments in the mid-year budget and to pay down six-hundred-thousand. Once again, this is like a mortgage, the more you put in, and that will pay down the principal, and that will shorten the term of the loan. This is the case for pension liability, and we're hopeful that we pay this down, and this liability will be a lot lower eventually. And in addition to that, we are still able to add additional three-hundred-and-sixty-thousand dollars to the unassigned funds for the general fund to continue build up this emergency fund. Here is the breakdown of our reserve within the general fund as of fiscal year seventeen. As you can see, there is an increase of six-hundred-thousand in the purse reserve, and we were able to maintain a capital improvement reserve at about one million dollars. The next category is land held when we sell. The reserve is not cash, it represents the land transferred from the former redevelopment agency to the city, which we plan to develop in the future. Lastly, general fund reserve increased by three-hundred-and-sixty-thousand dollars because of the surplus, and we're now at twelve-point-six million dollars. This is a general fund reserve in a ten-year trend. This is the unassigned portion money we have saved up in the bank. At the end of fiscal year seventeen, the reserve has gone up to twelve-point-six million, which is close to fifty percent of our total operational budget. It is our goal to continue build this up for future use. As I mentioned earlier about our revenues, our revenue base is heavily relied on sales tax, and sales tax can be very volatile, easily impacted by just fuel prices or just retail businesses. Having this reserve will help sustain us in events that we have a major disaster or lose a major business in town. Lastly, for water fund, after a few years' deficit, we posting a surplus of two-hundred-and-eight-thousand dollars and a fund balance of two-point-four million dollars. Historically, it's always been our council's desire to keep our water rates low. If you recall, we had a rate increase in June two thousand and sixteen, and we still keep our rate amount the lowest in the region. The rate increase was to keep up the increases imposed by Water Replenishment District and Central Basin. Our current revenue stream is sufficient to sustain the day-to-day operation, but just not enough to support additional infrastructure improvements, especially we have a rather old system. Therefore, obtaining additional funding is necessary in order to complete the new well and be able to be more self-sufficient in pumping groundwater instead of relying on purchased water. Now that our financial is looking better, it is our goal to get financing source for the new well construction within a year. With that, this wrapped up my presentation. It is recommended the council receive and file the fiscal year seventeen financial report, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
On the sales tax, have we lost some big suppliers or big taxpayers in the city, or is it just a sign of the time?
The big part of it was related to fuel prices, and we did lose a rather big retailer in that fiscal year.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Any other questions?
The question we receive and file.
Thank you.
Moved by Hanson, seconded by, moved by Hoffmeyer, seconded by Hanson, that we receive and file the item. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Gillian, councilmember Hanson.
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffmeyer.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Martinez.
Yes.
Mayor Lemonz.
Yes.
Okay, we're going to move to item twenty-one, authorizing staff to submit an application for to Tree City.
Yes, Madam Mayor, council. Earlier, you heard about the energy program that we just joined and about the conversion of our street meetings to drought-tolerant landscape. Both efforts are helping us to be a more sustainable community. Carrying on with this theme tonight is our next item, which allows us to pursue a designation called Tree City USA. We're actually very close to already meeting this designation. Looks like we just need one more item, and Chris will handle the presentation. Chris?
Thank you very much, Mayor, members of the council. The city of Paramount has a large inventory of trees, some almost eight thousand trees that the Public Works Department manages. Trees have historically been part of the Paramount landscape and is often a noted part of the city's streetscape whenever you enter for some of our surrounding communities. Trees are always included in the city's development projects and public improvements, and we generally require trees at every opportunity in private developments, whether they are private onsite trees or trees that become part of the city's tree inventory. The city also periodically partners with other groups to provide tree planting opportunities and events. And in fact, we have a large event planned for next year as part of an Arbor Day event that we are coordinating. One of the gold standards for municipalities, particularly those who do have a robust tree program, is to apply and maintain Tree City USA designation. Some of the surrounding cities that have Tree City designation are Lakewood, Santa Fe Springs, Cerritos Commerce, and Norwalk, who have all received this designation. In order to become a tree city, the city must apply, and they must meet certain criteria. The criteria is, is that, one, we must have a tree care ordinance. We also must designate a tree representative to oversee tree care activity. We must show that we have annual expenditures of at least two dollars per capita, and that we plan and hold an Arbor Day observance. In all of these cases, we meet that criteria with one exception in that we don't have a tree care ordinance. Ordinance ten ninety-five will establish the tree care ordinance necessary for making a Tree City USA application. The ordinance actually will formally codify our existing tree care policy. Perhaps the most important part of the ordinance is that it requires for the future that the city will continue to follow recognized Arbor Care practices as the standard for tree care in the city. Tree City USA has many benefits that come along with the designation. It ensures that the city's tree inventory is properly cared for into the future. Tree City designation also will formally provide a vehicle for continued attention to our tree resources and provide the opportunity to recognize the importance of this resource to our city and to promote events that encourage tree planting. As we all know, a robust tree inventory will result in energy savings by helping to keep our homes and businesses cool, improves the appearance of the community, and as a result, improves property values and helps to improve air quality. So with that, we are recommending that the council introduce ordinance number ten ninety-eight. Read by title only, wait for the reading, and place it on the next regular agenda for adoption. And with that, that concludes my presentation, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Chris. Questions?
Ten ninety-five.
Oh, sorry.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Moved by Hanson, seconded by Hoffmeyer. Can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Gillian. Councilmember Hanson.
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffmeyer.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Martinez.
Yes.
Mayor Lemonz.
Yes.
The next item that we have are committee reports, and we're going to have a status report on the air quality subcommittee from councilmembers Martinez and Hoffmeyer.
It was a pleasure serving on the subcommittee. I enjoyed working with various members of the community and developing the proposed zoning amendments. It was a lot of hard work over many months, but I think what we've come up with will help to protect the health and safety of our residents, while not creating overly burdensome regulations for responsible businesses that take care about their employees and the community. Mr. Hoffmeyer, do you have any comments?
Yeah, thank you, Diane. Yeah. I was also glad to serve on the subcommittee. I thought it was a chance for us as a city, the council members, and the general public to get together and work and find real solutions to our air quality problem. The zoning amendments will bring about a big change in the way our industrial people use our city's ground. And not only will it help control how businesses operate, but it will also prohibit more and more, a bigger impact on the industrial business from coming to Paramount in the future. I really believe everyone involved with the subreport process has helped us to bring about a positive change to our community. At this point, Kevin, you want to finish it?
Yes, thank you, Vice Mayor Martinez and City Councilmember Hoffmeyer. This is just a brief report back to the city council on the activities of the air quality subcommittee that you formed late last year. The subcommittee has completed its work and is now bringing back its recommendations to you. As mentioned, the city council appointed Vice Mayor Martinez and City Councilmember Hoffmeyer to the subcommittee. And because of the importance of the air quality issue the city is dealing with, the city council felt it important to include members of the public in the subcommittee process. As a result, city commissioners representative from PUSD and three at-large community members were selected by the subcommittee were invited to participate in the subcommittee meetings and discussion. With city staff, the participants and the subcommittee worked together in forming recommendations. The subcommittee held its first meeting in December two thousand and sixteen and had ten meetings overall through October of this year. The primary purpose of the subcommittee was to come up with air quality solutions within the city's jurisdictional authority, which is primarily through amendments to the city's zoning policies. The goal was to help improve air quality through zoning amendments and use conditions, regulating how industrial businesses operate in Paramount. After extensive analysis and discussion by the subcommittee, draft zoning amendments have been prepared and are now ready for review by the Planning Commission and the city council. You'll recall that the city council adopted a series of moratoria on metal-related businesses. The intent was to halt new metal-related businesses from establishing in Paramount and to stop any operational expansion work by existing metal businesses, so the city, through the subcommittee's process, could do its analysis and come up with new regulatory changes to help improve local air quality. And just briefly, some background on the city's zoning ordinance. It was adopted by the city council way back in nineteen sixty-two. At the time, the city adopted what was in place from the county prior to the city's incorporation. Zones include industrial, commercial, and residential. And specifically for the industrial zones, there are three categories. M1 for light manufacturing, M2 for heavy manufacturing, and PDPS, which allows flexibility for a variety of industrial uses. So in summary, now that the subcommittee work is completed, it's recommending the following. Significant changes to uses in each industrial zone. New development standards to help address aesthetics, scale of developments, and public accountability and transparency. And a process for conditionally permitting existing industrial businesses not currently operating under a CUP. The city's, excuse me, the subcommittee's intent with developing this new regulatory framework was to allow responsible businesses to operate under reasonable guidelines that help protect the health and safety of the community. These proposed modifications to the zoning code represent sweeping changes that will profoundly alter business uses and operations in Paramount's industrial areas. At this time, as noted in my report, staff will take the subcommittee's recommendations forward to the Planning Commission for a thorough review and vetting in February two thousand and eighteen. Staff then expects to present the Planning Commission's recommendations back to you for consideration in March two thousand and eighteen. With that, that concludes my report, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Kevin. Questions?
I just want to say one thing that, you know, on the subcommittee we were on, I just want to say Kevin and John Carver and his staff, they did just an unbelievable amount of legwork and footwork, bringing all the information back. So I think you'd be commended for your job.
Thank you.
Are there any other committee reports at this time?
No.
Okay. So, comment section, we want to move to the unfinished public comment cards, please.
Yes, Madam Mayor, our next speaker is Melissa Parra. Melissa, she's still in the audience? Oh, it looks like she went to the ladies' room.
Okay. If she comes back, we'll just go back.
You got it. Next speaker is Tammy Kegel.
My last name's Kegley. Good evening. I think we need to respect each other in this community, even if we disagree on different issues going on in the city. I have to say, I'm gonna repeat probably what someone else has already said. I'm very disappointed in your, in the vote to extend your term for another twelve months. I might be new still, coming forward and learning about all the politics in the city, but I believe this is not how things are supposed to be done. I have been coming just about to almost every city council meeting and commission meeting that I can make and finding about how change is going to be implemented and learning about things that are being done in the city since I've been learning about the issues that have been going on and that have been happening. But I'm trying to make change. And I think change is good for the future. And I do think, I want to thank Lori Gillan for bringing those issues to my attention or everyone's attention. I'm not saying that anyone else on the city council hasn't brought those to our attention, but I have to say that I feel like my rights haven't been heard or... I deserve to be heard in the city. And I feel very disappointed because I feel like I'm not being heard, and I'm sure other people are not being heard. And the citizens of Paramount deserve a chance to decide if this election should happen. And if you're able to go out in the community and ask people door-to-door if they want to make, if they want to permit their sidewalks to be able to have a parking permit, why can't we go out and ask them if they want to have a decision in the election? Whether we can have it in two thousand and eighteen or wait to two thousand and twenty?
Thirty seconds.
I think that's just a decision that we should ask the community. Because it feels like our rights to vote are being suppressed. And if forty-seven percent is estimated for voter turnout in two thousand and eighteen, it just doesn't make sense that a sixteen percent turnout in two thousand and twenty. There's something wrong with that. Once, it just doesn't make sense to me. That, it doesn't make sense. And that's all I have to say for right now. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Is Ms. Melissa Parra in the audience?
Good evening, council members. I'm not here to boast anyone's, or boost anyone's ego. I'm here to speak the truth. I'm here to speak the truth about moving the election to two thousand and twenty and extending each one of your terms by twelve months. Shame on you guys, honestly. That is a huge smack in the face to the residents of Paramount. Was the twenty years not long enough? Did the election scare you guys because it was the highest voter turnout? Your tactics are really getting old. Especially holding a meeting tonight, that is just wrong. It is one of the most celebrated days of the Hispanic community. And it's probably the reason why majority of the pep moms were not here. I don't hold to any religion, but for you guys, you guys pray before every meeting, you should hold more consideration into your residents because it is about seventy or eighty percent Hispanic. Lastly, did you guys really think this one through? Because on the city's website, on the main page, there's a flyer for cause and effect for the Chipotle fundraiser. So why not let's discuss this really quickly? Moving the election to two thousand and twenty will be dividing the city even more further. The people have already spoken, and the result is that we all want a recall. Do you guys have a chance to return your vote and vote again on it? So why not just do that instead of deciding yourself and moving it to two thousand and twenty? That's just wrong. That's taking away our voters' rights. And lastly, you guys just went over an ordinance with the words "community choice" within the last hour. And that is exactly what you guys are not doing. So just let us decide and vote in two thousand and eighteen. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Sarah Patricia Wilson.
Want to say it again?
She's, she's just put her hand over.
Good evening, board members. So I was looking, I was, I wanted to define environmental racism. Environmental racism is the placement of low-income or minority communities in the proximity of environmentally hazardous or degraded environments, such as toxic waste, pollution, and urban decay. We have over eighty metal companies here in Paramount. A medical waste incinerator, Calmed, who's expanding. Now we're gonna have the metro here. I think Paramount, as beautiful as it looks, as wonderful as it looks with its great renovations and the upgraded downtown, city of Paramount has environmental racism. Now, what type of legacy are you board members gonna leave behind? You guys are supposed to protect the community, protect the community's health. It's not, it should not be just business-driven. You guys should be proactive in helping the residents with their health concerns. A couple months ago, you guys voted against looking for a grant for air purifiers for residents? What does that tell us? That tells us you do not care about our health. Is it wealth over health? Because that's what it sounds like. You know, here you guys are defending Carlton Forge and Weber Metals, and you can laugh all you want, but a lot of the people that are administrating the city don't even live here. So we need you guys to care about us, not just the businesses. And we want, we want to be able to vote two thousand and eighteen. Do not suppress our votes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, council. I've heard different voices in the last few council meetings talking about how an unrelenting focus on the environment and air quality is causing a division in the community. I've heard people say they are ashamed of the behaviors and voices of dissent in our community and council. I want to remind the city that we live in a democracy. This is city hall. These chambers are for the people. Not some, but all people. I am proud to see that I've moved to a city where the community members know their First Amendment rights, know how to exercise their freedom of speech and to peaceably assemble. They They know their 15th Amendment right to vote without intimidation or obstruction. They know when voter suppression tactics are being used, and they know and exercise their California constitutional right, Article II, Section 139, when they feel dissatisfied with the performance of officials elected. It is the right of the people to address real issues and concerns about the air in our environment. It is not a tactic to divide the community, it is not a waste of city time, as some voices have suggested here. The air and the environment we live is interconnected with the lives and the health of real people in this community. This is city business. If the city and some community members cannot see this, there is a strong disconnect with what is going on. If even one person is sick in contaminated air, soil, or water, that is too many. I stand by those who have been impacted and want change. I want to see democracy in these chambers and not hypocrisy. There should be fairness and not impunity in these chambers. The rules of decorum have been established clearly stating in Rule F3 Subsection F, no personal tax should be directed to an individual, council member, or city staff, and the chair does not address the speaker's breach of this rule. I hope then that such rules of decorum will be equally as lenient when personal tax and other portions of the rules are directed to other council members and not just against one. When council members vote against clear numbers and evidence laying out a higher voter turnout and specific election costs, but rather focus on speculated numbers and no real election costs to extend their terms and delay an election, there's an obvious question mark for community members. Lack of city empathy, lack of city action has caused this community reaction.
Thirty seconds.
Focus on what is causing this unrest. What is the root cause and concerns for the issue? What are the real solutions? Who will listen? And which of our elected officials will make the best and unbiased decisions to help the community? Let's focus on the real issues, and if these issues are unclear, let those who understand the issues and want to get the work done find the solutions. The community is watching and counting on you. Thank you for my three minutes.
I wanted to talk about the bill that was passed in California, SP 415 and SP 568, to change the voting date for the national vote to coincide with the community's vote, the local community vote. That whole bill was passed so that we could have a big voter turnout. The whole bill, that, that was the whole point of the bill, so that people would vote in the national elections and that they would also vote in the local elections. So, what, what, what was done with the choice of choice number, instead of choice number one, you chose choice number two, which is to extend it to 2020, was, it was clear that in the stats of previous years, that it was 16% and 46% voter turnout. If it was 2018, it would be 46% more people showing up. In, in 2020, which is extending another year and so, is 16%. So, it, it makes no sense why you would want to suppress the vote. I think it's really disingenuous to change it to so far along the line. A lot of the city council members have been here a long time and have done a lot of things. And I think, it seems to me that by, by making that choice, you just want to prolong your guys' stay. I mean, because, oh, you're worried or something, or, I, I don't know what the, what the, the reasons for, for that. Like the man who was talking earlier, it doesn't make any sense, you would want to have more community participation, I would think, as our representatives in our city. I've been noticing lately, I've been noticing a lot of changes in the city, limiting the vote with this choice, limiting community participation in the rules of decorum, like people coming and, and maybe five minutes late before the session, and you're saying that they, that their speaker card can't be used. I think that's, that's limiting our participation, and I think that it's important to help, to encourage people to participate in the, in the, in the sessions here.
Thirty seconds.
Because the more, the more we can speak about our issues, and we talk about divisions, the more we can speak about our issues, the more we can come together and unify into something. So I think it's real divisive when you make a choice like that, to change the vote to another year later, because it's obvious that more people would come out, which you guys had on your, your screen of years before, that way more people would show up, almost three times the amount of people. So it makes no sense to me. I, I hope you guys will change your decision before, before they rule on it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Lisa Lappin?
Just to add on to what Eric said, I don't understand why you wouldn't want to have the election at the same time Paramount Unified School District is having a school board election. You always do everything together in unison, so this could be something else that you could do in unison, so that people going to vote for the school board could be voting for the school, for the city council at the same time. It just makes sense, so, but that's not my real purpose in coming here. I wanted to share this when Mrs. Hoffmeyer was ill, so I, I came back to share what I wanted to share. And that is some information that I found on the internet that I thought was on the AQMD website. So just to recap, a small amount of the op-ed that I wrote for the Press Telegram in February 2017, I believe it was, I stated, "As a teacher in Paramount, I have witnessed firsthand the agony of a student losing her battle to cancer. Each year, teachers learn of more children. One teacher at Keppel School has two children in her kindergarten class this year with cancer. That makes five students that she's had in the last eight years at Keppel with cancer, one teacher." So, I don't know if that's Paramount companies or continent companies blowing, but this is a, this is a big concern. Anyway, that wasn't in the article. "Each year, teachers learn of more students in Paramount suffering from this disease, with as many as five students diagnosed at one school. Hundreds of residents of all ages, including young mothers, are dead or dying. An entire community cannot be considered collateral damage, no matter how lofty or profitable the business." So, that's what I wrote, and then Mr. Hoffmeyer, the former mayor, you wrote, I'll just read a little bit. One of the, one of the voice, wait, over the last few months, this is February 18th, the city of Paramount has been deeply focused on air quality issues. One of the voices has been Lisa Lappin, a teacher in the Paramount Unified School District, and someone whose dedication to this issue I respect. And then you went on to say you had a need to clarify some key facts. Paramount is not home to 100, more than 100 metal companies, Mr. Hoffmeyer wrote. And then you wrote, "A number seemingly to suggest that metal pollutants are saturated in our city of less than five square miles." And then you said, "The actual number of metal-related companies is 85." I have the evidence here from the AQMD website. I didn't have it, I called them and got this information verbally, but Ms. Sheriff Snyder retired and wasn't able to provide me with this, so I didn't have it until AQMD published it July 2017.
Thank you, Ms. Lappin, your time has expired. Thank you.
Yes, but I'm going to give this to the city manager.
Yeah, please do.
I think, to the city.
Please do, thank you. Is there another speaker?
Yes, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, go ahead and give it to me.
100 and 30 have metal companies.
Okay, if you want to continue, you gave us that information last time, the city responded to you, that several of the companies that you had listed on there are out of business. And the AQMD is the one that did the survey in the city that came up with the count of 80. So you may have something verbal, we have something written.
I have something written.
If you get something written that differs from that, bring it to us.
I'm gonna give this to the city attorney.
And give that to staff, and thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Ms. Sonia DeLeón. Is this DeLeón? Okay, Mr. Ricardo Alvarado. Mr. Alvarado?
Good evening, good evening, council. Sorry, I'm gonna get a minute, just find out who won the Alabama election. What up? All right, all right, it's good that I came tonight, because last year, November 2016, my heart sank when Donald Trump won the presidential election. And of course, ever since that day, I've been trying to recuperate, I've been trying to learn as much as I can since that year, to try to get involved as much as possible to make the changes for when 2020 comes. That said, one of the big things that I've heard from people was obviously get involved in the public and state elections. That said, I want to, before I get into that detail, just want to thank Lori Gillen for going ahead and serving her community. Thank you so much. I mean, I know it probably hasn't been an easy job for these past few months, but nonetheless, we thank you for your fight. I compare that to like in the movie Wonder Woman, where Diane just gets onto No Man's Land and is fighting against all the bullets and the German soldiers, so. But, so going back to that, it's good to see that you guys are starting, are starting to take the air quality issue a little more seriously. I'm happy to see that. And I'm also happy to see that you guys are also fixing the issue with Orange in Somerset. I live on that street, and I swear to God, I think there's been seven accidents this year from just that street alone, so the fact that issue's being addressed is awesome, is awesome. Thank you very much. But, the thing that I really have issue with is the fact that you guys want to hold elections for 2020, which, instead of 2018. Now, the thing is that I'm already gearing up for 2018 to make sure that I go ahead and vote for midterm elections to make sure we can have a change to minimize the damage that our president has done to this country. What I don't get is why you guys want to go ahead and just delay that vote. I mean, last time I checked, when I look, when I look behind Tom Hanson's seat, I see the American flag. If last time I checked, we're in a democracy. The way I see it, anybody who works in government, you work for us, we are your bosses, and you guys have to do what we tell you to do. And that said, just to paraphrase something from US Senator Bernie Sanders, "If you guys, you know, do not believe in a fair, you know, democracy, you should not, you should not be allowed to run for office." That will end my time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Gurdie Karm.
My comments pertain to Item 10 regarding the Bellflower Paramount Active Transportation Plan. The memorandum of understanding authorizes Bellflower as the leading authority. I want to advocate that Paramount play an active role. The original plan was created by a respected planning firm. However, I want to emphasize the need for in-house staff working on our advanced long-range planning. The original plan's public outreach left to the responsibility of the firm resulted in the following. They conducted a grand total of two outreach events from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM in local parks. That means that they spent a total of eight hours in our cities and just four hours in Paramount. They gathered 30 surveys from Bellflower and only 15 from Paramount. It is my understanding that while the firm provided interpretation for the surveys, it is unclear whether the surveys were available in any other language besides English. I bring this up now to encourage you to democratize these projects as much as possible by supporting your staff, especially in how outreach is conducted. Finally, I support, sorry, our city, our manufacturing sector that provides gainful employment, not just part-time retail employment, and my fellow community members that reside here. Having grown up here, it's important to me that those that were here when Paramount was underserved and overlooked be able to stay here to enjoy what it's becoming. Therefore, with this incoming light rail, I emphasize to develop the company land use documents with as much in-house staff as possible, this means city employees, with as much outreach and meaningful engagement as possible. This means meeting people where they are, not just having them come to you. Finally, it is also worth mentioning that with rising property values in Paramount, Paramount Kids cannot afford to live where we grew up. Millennials are moving back in with parents, resulting in overcrowding, and the parking issues that were brought up earlier. I'm here to voice political support for affordable housing in the city of Paramount. When implemented thoughtfully, it can be a positive asset to our communities. As you look to leave your legacy, be sure that your original constituents are the ones who are able to enjoy the city you have helped shape. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so we will move to comments from staff.
Yeah, just to recognize the wonderful job that the Parks and Rec Department did, the tireless efforts that they did to do the, put on the holiday events that, that we all enjoyed, as well as the support from Public Works and Public Safety, they did a fantastic job supporting those events.
Ms. Martinez, council member comments?
I would like to echo what our city manager stated. I thought the Christmas tree lighting ceremony, the Christmas train, Santa, breakfast with Santa, it brought a beautiful spirit to the city. I was able to interact with many of the residents, and they were very, very pleased with our holiday festivities. And, so I want to thank Public Works and Dave, your group, and I'd like to wish each and every one of you a merry, merry Christmas.
Thank you. Daryl?
I just go along with Diane, I think they did a great job. I think the tree lighting was the biggest success that we've had. I think it goes every year, and just have to buy more cookies.
Nancy, again?
Yes, so I'm gonna need you to help me guide you to side me through this. Be the least experienced person here in what we did in the consent calendar. I didn't know you were going to put in there Order Number 1092 for the municipal elections. I go to guess on the consent calendar, not realizing we weren't gonna go through each of these individually, so therefore I'd like to change my vote. I read where I ever have to change my mind, I can do it before the next city council, and I'm directing my vote to...
That would be correct.
Thank you. Venus's item was brought back up, and for reconsideration, I need to poll each council member and see if you have any comments on that. Diane?
No comments.
Daryl?
No comments.
Tom?
No, I don't think so.
Okay, I do. When it was approved on the consent calendar, we have that, you're a no vote on it, we, we understand that. And, pardon me?
I wasn't gonna say that, but that's fine.
Is that correct?
It's only like to do that to my staff.
Yeah, do I have your, yeah, it's just that you reopened the item, so I'm going to address something on the item. I can tell you that this was a really tough item for me to make a decision on, although it's been put in the media that I had already made a decision on the item, I had not made a decision on the item because I wasn't present for the last vote on it, I was on vacation. And I have since watched the council meeting that took place that night. I also listened to the public comment section, and I read the report. I would be interested at some point in time with speaking to anybody in the audience who differs with the interpretation of the figures of what I read, and also met with the city clerk to make sure that I had them correct. So, at some time after, if anybody would like to speak to me about that, I would be happy to. So what I would like to say is that I was initially inclined to vote for a 2018 election, and then after researching the voter turnout and finding out that the 2020 election is actually the presidential primary, which actually brings the larger turnout to the community, the 48% that has been spoken of so often by the community was actually an average of four years. And the highest voter turnout during that time were during presidential elections. When they were in the off years, all, they all took place in November, and they were state elections, they were less than 20%. So the 2020 election would be the presidential primary, which would actually have the greater voter turnout. So, it would appear to me that the intention of the county ordinance was to increase voter turnout, and that that would certainly be the highest voter turnout that the history of the presidential elections would make, and we could accomplish that goal. I also took into consideration the public comments about voting in 2018, but I could not get past the fact that we just had an election in 2017, and there were four candidates for that particular election, and certainly could have been many more, anyone who wanted to run in that election. So literally just a few months ago, there was a citywide... So literally just a few months ago, there was a citywide election. Um, I also don't think that it's appropriate to ask sitting council members to relinquish months on their terms to accommodate an argument that, when I researched it, really doesn't stand up to the facts. So that is my reason for voting yes on the item because I listened to the comments made by, um, the residents and I researched those numbers. And, um, although there's been comments made about there haven't been elections in ten years, we just had an election a few months ago. And, um, as far as people being made aware, I know that I knocked on about every single door in the city and left literature. So, um, I'm sorry if that literature wasn't taken seriously and, and people didn't do it. But thank you all for your comments. Um, I wanted to go on the record for you to understand that, um, I'm a fact-based person. That's what the facts bear out to me. This was a difficult decision for me, and, um, thank you. And Ms. Ginn, you can return to your comments.
Well, simply, I just wanted to wish everybody a Merry Christmas. And also, in the back of the room, I am used to seeing, as I'm sure you are, Alice and Jay. And Alice isn't here. Jay is very ill. And I just want to say Merry Christmas, and you are Miss Alice and Jay if you happen to watch this later on. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I would like to make a little bit of a comment, actually. And, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. City Attorney. I believe that the reason the state, or one of the main reasons the state decided to move from June to March for the primary election is because we have such a low voter turnout because back east, they've already said who's gonna be a winner. And people say, "Why even go waste my time to vote?" Is that correct? Somewhat?
Are you talking about?
Well, go ahead.
I just, what, it was, are we talking about in a presidential election?
Yes, primary. Moving to, to March of twenty twenty.
That was an argument that was made, yes.
Was that not true? Okay, so it kind of stands to reason that, that in March, to me anyway, thinking, uh, that probably in 2020, the primary presidential election in March will have a higher voter turnout than a state election. The state elections have been kind of notoriously low usually. Uh, so that's one of the rea, that's probably the main reason. Everybody's looking to have a large voter turnout, and I think that we'll have a larger voter turnout in March than we will in November.
Any other comments?
Yeah, wish everybody a Merry Christmas. Say a very happy, prosperous new year and healthy one, too.
Okay, so we're gonna adjourn this, uh, meeting, and we're gonna move right into the successor agency for December twelfth. Can I have roll call, please?
Councilmember Ginn? Councilmember Hoffmeyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Hanson?
Here.
Vice President Martinez?
Here.
Mayor Lemmons?
Here.
Any other comments? Okay, consent calendar.
Second.
Moved by Hoffmeyer, seconded by Hanson. Can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Ginn? Councilmember Hanson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffmeyer? Vice President Martinez?
Yes.
Mayor Lemmons?
Yes, we're adjourned. Thank you, everyone.